Good evening to each of you. The School Board of Putnam County is officially called to order this Tuesday, June the 18th, 2019. Our opening pledge will be led by Mrs. Holly Pickens and our invocation was to be done by Pastor Chumney and I'm looking for him and I don't see him and so I will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come this evening calling upon your name, thanking you for everything that you have done for us today, from waking us up this morning and allowing us to go through this day, for granting us traveling mercy and for keeping your hands of protection upon us. Father, we ask you right now that you would bless our children as they are on summer break, that you would keep them safe from hurt, harm, or danger, help them to make wise decisions. Bless our faculty and staff that are also on vacation, God. Grant them this time to rest, to regroup and revive themselves so that when they return, God, they'll be ready to move forward with our children. Now, God, we pray your blessings upon this body, this school board, appointed, oh, God, to serve the citizens of this county. Help us to make decisions, God, that are guided by wisdom. God, help us to do the things that are in the best interest of our children and our stakeholders. Now, Father, we pray your blessing and we thank you for the products of Putnam. God, for those that chose to go to school here, to live and raise their families here, and then to give back to this community. Just continue to watch over us and keep us is our prayer we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor, he owes me twice. He owes me twice. Okay, at this time, we will start our presentations with our superintendent. The presentation to the ones that will be awarded as products of Putnam, they will recognized during the graduations and now we want to do it so that others that may not have been there will be able to see it.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. This is a real great time to be here and a really enjoyable time because we get to celebrate people who've come through our school system and have made us proud. And that's what we want all of our students in the schools now to do, is to know that there is a light at the end of the tunnel and there is a future and the future is right here in Putnam County. So I can't be more proud than to stand up here and recognize these distinguished people. Let me read a little overview and then I'm going to ask our public information officer, Felicia Cahan, to come up and read a biography on each of these individuals and we're going to present them with a plaque and I'm going to ask Mr. Michael Leonard, publisher from the Placada Daily News, to join me. And as a matter of fact, the Placada Daily News and the Putnam Chamber of Commerce helped sponsor this and helped us coordinate it and they actually helped us to select these individuals. So thank you, Michael, for being here. Dana Jones, the president of the chamber could not be here tonight, but I know she wanted to be. The 2019 Product of Putnam Award serves to recognize individuals who graduated from the Putnam County School District and have successfully given back to Putnam County. This could be through the form of working, volunteering, or a combination of both. We wanted to recognize these individuals that give back to our community and continue to work towards making Putnam County a better place to work and live. We poured through the nominees in the fields of healthcare, education, law enforcement, welding, industrial manufacturing, government, entrepreneurs, agriculture, and so on. Even volunteers and retirees were evaluated as potential products of Putnam and we are pleased to present the seven individuals in the following categories that rose above the rest. And the categories are business, education, healthcare, industrial manufacturing, public service, agriculture, and then volunteer and community service. As we recognize these individuals and share their stories, we hope you are inspired and encouraged for the positive direction of Putnam County and for the potential our current and future students have because of our great school district. We are proud to be PCSD. So this time, I'll ask Felicia to come up and read them and I want to thank Felicia for what she's done. She actually put all this together and has really been the driving force to make this work. So appreciate her hard work.
All right, so, can you hear me? At this time, I would like to please have Susie Klein come to the front. Susie Klein is a 1976 graduate from Interlocken High School. After graduation, she joined the U.S. Army Reserves. She later became a pet groomer, opening her business, Susie's Dog House, over 30 years ago, where she still works today. She earned an AA degree from St. John's River State College along the way. She has been the church clerk at First Baptist Interlocken for over 25 years. She serves the Lord as assistant Sunday School Director, choir member, nursery worker, and custodian. She still enjoys running and can meet competing in 5K runs when time permits. She is a loving, caring mother, grandmother, and wife. She and her husband will celebrate 41 years of marriage this year. Susie continues to reach out to people anytime she sees a need. She is the most loving, caring, and giving person that I know.
And she knew my grandmother and Hollister for many years. Thank you.
You've got to multitask, Felicia.
If you don't know Susie Klein, you don't know anybody.
Congratulations and we want to get a picture.
Awesome.
Congratulations, Susie. Congratulations.
We want to have them sit down and bring them back up.
Yeah, for the group.
Do what Susie says.
Karen Hughes is a 1970 graduate of Palatka South High School. She attended the University of Florida and after graduation came back to Palatka South High School to teach math. After teaching a few years, she became a dean at PHS, then an assistant principal, and ultimately the principal. After she retired, she tutored at no charge, she never charges, Palatka High students in math. She then was hired by the district data processing department where she worked several years, still tutoring when needed. Karen is very involved in the community through her membership in the Kiwanis of the Azalea City where she's in charge of bugs, bring upgrades at our middle schools. She's also the past president of the Kiwanis of the Azalea City. She's an officer on the board of directors at Road Heavers Boys Ranch where she spends countless hours. She's in charge of all ticket sales for the high school musical productions. She is a very involved member of First Baptist Church where she teaches Sunday School, sings in the choir, cooks for Wednesday night suppers, serves at Palatka's, or serves the football prayer breakfast, and cleans the church nursery every week. She is also the announcer for the Palatka High School softball team. She is most deserving of this award.
Can I say one more thing before you do that? When I was school superintendent, I was contacted by the University of Florida to find someone that I felt was most deserving to be a, in the University of Florida Hall of Fame. Karen was one of our principals at Palatka High. She did a fantastic job for many years and I was very, and much in awe of the job she did and appreciated it and nominated her and she was chosen out of hundreds and hundreds of people. So she is a, she is a member of the University of Florida Hall of Fame of Education.
She bleeds orange and blue.
Karen's been my mentor for many years and has well-
My boss.
I wouldn't let her mentor me.
I appreciate everything she's done for-
I'm still a little scared of her.
She did get on to me for putting my pet alligator in her face in second grade or third grade, I don't remember. Back when you could have pet alligators.
Next, we have Dr. Patrick Harris. He was unable to attend this evening, but I'll go ahead and read his bio. So, let me hand you his-
That's Lloyd.
Okay. Dr. Harris is a highly respected physician and as such, he has cared for many in our community. In numerous ways, he has helped to promote the overall health and well-being of our community. He has served on numerous boards, including the hospital board, and is currently the president of the Rotary Club of Palatka. He and his wife Lynn have raised their family here. Their children are outstanding students in the local school system and exemplary young people. Dr. Harris, upon graduation from medical school, could have opened a practice anywhere he chose, but he chose to come back to his hometown and open a practice to serve the citizens of this great county. In addition to his successful practice, he is currently serving as the president of the Rotary Club of Palatka and is a major force in the blood screening project and health fair offered by the Rotary Club for the citizens of Putnam County. Dr. Patrick Harris.
And we'll give him a pass because he came to Crescent City graduation-
Yes, we did.
-where we recognized him and also he came to Palatka High's graduation because he had a son graduating.
Son graduating.
So he did two graduations, so we'll give him tonight.
Yeah. There you go. Next, we have Bodhi DeWire. Bodhi is a 2009 graduate of Palatka High School. He is currently working as a fourth generation HVAC, generation in HVAC work at a family-owned Palatka Heating and Air. On his time off, he helps as a coaching assistant for the Palatka High School varsity baseball team. Bodhi was part of the final four teams for Nationals his senior year and enjoys sharing his love and knowledge for baseball. He is a great example for the young men at the high school and I know he enjoys helping them and spending time giving back to the community. Bodhi DeWire.
Bodhi's a lot smarter than his granddaddy.
That final four was so exciting. Under the tutelage of Matt McCall. Congratulations, Bodhi. Proud of you, Bodhi.
Next, we have DJ Johnson. DJ is a 2005 graduate of Crescent City High School. He went on to Daytona State College to study emergency services. After graduating from Daytona State College, he then started working with the Palatka Police Department from October of 2013 to June 2014 as a police officer on the patrol division. Then, from June 2014 to January 2019, he was a detective in the criminal investigations department. He investigated persons and property crimes in major cases. DJ is currently a sergeant on the patrol division. He has been recognized by the city of Palatka for his hard work and dedication. He was named Rookie of the Year in 2014 and Detective of the Year in 2016. In 2018, he was part of the Shift of the Year and Palatka Daily News Reader Choice recipient for Best Police Officer. DJ was also recognized last year as one of the individuals for Putnam County 20 Under 40. He has been a volunteer with the Police Athletic League since he began working with the police department. DJ has received an award for his involvement with the Police Athletic League where he enjoys volunteering his time with the youth of Putnam. He also serves as a board member for PALS. DJ Johnson.
Thank you, DJ. All right, DJ.
Make me feel safe just seeing him.
I know.
I think he could take Rick in and Mike better during the same time.
Very formidable.
Next, we have Chance Clay. Chance is a 2005 graduate of Palatka High School. He is seventh generation on his family's ranch in Putnam County, Florida. Growing up, he worked with his family on their cow calf operation. After attending St. John's River Community College, he remained on the ranch and began to diversify the operation. Clay Ranch now consists of a cow calf operation, stalker calf operation, commercial blueberry farm, and timber production. Chance is also heavily involved with the Florida Cattlemen's Association. He served as state director for Putnam County's Cattlemen's Association for six years. He is currently the chairman of FCA's Research and Education Committee. Their primary role of this committee is to act as a liaison between FCA and researchers. Along with his involvement in the Cattlemen's Association, he is involved with Florida Farm Bureau. He served a two-year term on Florida Farm Bureau's Young Farmer and Rancher Leadership Group. Chance and his wife Sarah have a three-year-old daughter named Lillian and a five-month-old named Riley. Chance's goals are to continue to expand the ranching operation in hopes to pass it on to his children. Chance Clay.
He's hoping he cannot be here tonight. He's at a Cattlemen's meeting somewhere, so that's why he couldn't be here.
Probably more of a-
Doing his thing.
And last, but certainly not least, is Jarvis Milton. Jarvis is a 1998 graduate of Palatka High School. For the past five years, he has offered his time to help coach the track team. When he was employed, he would rush to the track field once he was off to help coach the players. During track season, he would also cut his hours at work to be able to attend track meets. He also held fundraisers such as selling barbecue and fried chicken dinners to help the track team earn money to attend track meets. Even after his recent shoulder surgery, he put his pain aside to be able to help coach the team along with other coaches. He has done this for years with no compensation or job well done, but that has not stopped him because he loves those kids as if they were his and they love him as well. He's a hard worker who believes in the youth of Putnam County. He's dedicated countless hours at Palatka High School's coaching track and field for years. He loves mentoring the youth and getting them to believe in their own talent and that they are somebody. His passion is volunteering to work with the youth in AAU and high school track and field and just being the coach and family that they could come to for answers. In his eyes, every kid is someone, they just have to believe in themselves along with their education. He thrives to be the best father and role model that he can be to set examples for these youth. He loves his family and the kids of Putnam County. Jarvis Milton.
Thank you, thank you.
He has got Palatka High track rolling again.
So those were our seven nominee, or honorees. The Putnam County School District Product of Putnam honors those alumni with exemplary achievement in the areas of postgraduate career accomplishments, leadership within career organizations and industries, community service and volunteer leadership in their community, prior recognition and honors, and innovative accomplishments. As honorees of the Product of Putnam Award, they will forever be recognized as representing the best of Putnam County. Their success is a reflection of the opportunities provided them throughout their grade school experiences as Putnam County students. Thank you all.
Can you get a group picture, Rick? We get a group picture.
I'd also like to point out that our latest honoree was asking him about his experience as a student at track and field. Tells me he was a state champion in more than one event.
Madam Chair, could you join us?
I think we should all get one.
I'll sit up here. Jake, you can get under.
I want to get rid of them. Come on.
Yeah, however you want to do it. Please come down.
Only Jane.
You won't be able to see him. Need to squeeze in more.
Squeeze in a little bit. Do you want us to bow?
Tighten it a-
Tighten up. Tighten up. This is good.
All right.
Michael, you want it done. Try to come back.
You good?
That's good.
I don't want to make scenes.
Thank y'all. Don't worry, I will. I'll make sure he knows that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
They might want to go.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming again on short notice.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Hey, Jane.
Thank you for all you do.
I was telling Mr. that after-
He works another year to get his name up.
It was so funny. And thank you all again for everything you've done and are doing for our children and our community. And you too, Karen. And you too, Karen. Bye, y'all.
Yeah, Thomas Bowlen, Thomas Bowlen's a product of Putnam County School. He not half-bad.
Congressmen always say, always say, and you too, Alona. They say, the Evans family is my favorite family.
Sandy, pull your microphone toward you so people can hear you on the YouTube.
With that white towel.
Mike, did you do it?
Bud, pull your microphone toward you.
Yeah, Sandy's got it.
Okay.
Got one. The public comment card. Yes, yes. Well, that went very nicely. That was, that was great. Awesome. That made me cry. So they will be the ones that will be initiated, well, sworn into, into the Hall of Fame. They will start the ball, the road.
We're actually going to be putting a plaque up in the hallway out here with their names on it.
Oh, that's good.
We're adding that each year, so.
Great, great, awesome. Okay, at this time, our, we will hear public comments. We do have one here regarding scholarship, the Kiwanis Club of the Azalea City. Mr. Mike Perry, if you will come, please.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chairperson. My name's Mike Perry. I live at 225 Hiawatha Court in East Palatka. It's just my luck to have to follow the, follow the wonderful Product of Putnam winners, but I'm here today in my capacity as the president of the Kiwanis Club of the Azalea City. Now, I wasn't the president that Karen Hughes was, but I'm doing my best.
Well, you are. You're pretty clean.
Thank you, Jane.
Regardless of what Jane says, we think you're going to do a fine job.
He knows how.
Thank you, thank you. It was recently my privilege to award scholarships to deserving Putnam County graduating seniors and I had an opportunity during that time, going to the various high schools, to meet and in some cases already knew some of the recipients, but I got to meet a lot of very wonderful children or students, graduating seniors. And I know that I'm preaching to the choir, but I want to keep preaching as long as there's somebody that's going to listen. And I learned a couple of things from being around these children or these graduating seniors. And first of all, I realized that while it is a collaborative effort between, between teachers, parents, and students, that our students here in Putnam County can compete with anybody.
Absolutely.
Amen.
That's the first thing I learned. The second thing is, is that our Putnam County students are graduating with honors and they're attending the best universities and colleges, not only in the state of Florida, but throughout our nation. What we need to do now is like we just honored these folks, how do we keep them here? How do we get them to come back here? Of course, we have a beautiful example, Charlie Douglas back here with us. We just need more of that, more and more of that. The third thing I've learned is that anybody that doesn't think that we have outstanding students, I invite you to come with me when I give out scholarships next year at Interlocken High School, at Palatka High School, at QI, they come to Palatka High School, and at Crescent City High School. I can assure you, you will see a group of young men and women that are absolutely great, fine representatives of our county and goes to show you what this school system is really all about. So, on behalf of the Kiwanis Club of the Azalea City, I would like to thank the school district, this board, our superintendent, for the opportunity to participate in honoring these young, these outstanding young men and women through our scholarship program. I thank you for your time and I bid you all a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. Okay, at this time, we are ready to move into our consent agenda and we will start with you, Mrs. Pickens. F1. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Buckles?
I was going to pull F1. I just briefly spoke to Travis prior to the meeting. I just wanted to say a few words.
All right. I have none. Mine were taken care. Mr. McInnis?
Nothing.
Okay.
I have nothing. All my questions were answered.
Okay, all right. So we will entertain a motion to accept the agenda minus-
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda minus F1.
We'll second that.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Buckles that we accept the agenda, consent agenda minus F1 and second by Mr. Bud McInnis. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. Okay, Mrs. Pickens, F1.
I just, I talked to Thomas earlier and asking just to highlight some of the changes in the code of conduct, you know, I just, nothing that I questioned, but just that I think that we ought to highlight it.
And we aim to please. So what I've done is run copies of the pages with changes.
Thank you.
I had run that. Well, I just went through and read all red part. Yeah, I was going to find out. Reports. So this is great. Thank you, Holly.
Okay, so, starting on page 13, you'll see some red language and this was requested by principals and it surrounds dress code, the rips and holes and tears that kids like to wear in blue jeans. The secondary principals or the high school principals are a lot more laid back than the middle school principals as far as that's concerned. So where you have zero tolerance in some places and it's a little more laid back in other places, you had two factions wanting it, one wanting it in, one wanting it out. So what they did to satisfy that was principals discretion, so.
Correct, because Thomas, a dean or teachers or principals can spend their entire minutes at a school-
Right.
-like Palatka High School policing that.
Running.
You know, I mean, I don't want them to be-
No dress code.
Nude, but-
Right, right.
You know, a little hole in the knee is not going to keep me from teaching them.
Absolutely.
Most, I know Jane would remember and Sandy, but you remember when they used to measure sideburns in high school?
I remember. We couldn't wear dresses, okay? So.
Well, along those lines, we did remove some language that was kind of outdated. Bloomers were in here as things get similar. Yes, ma'am, we took that out.
Thank you, thank you, Thomas.
Lots of leggings and things along that nature.
That was during the time Moses was-
Well, I mean, you know, it probably came right after sideburns, but it's still in there, so we brought it into the 21st century. On page 17, pretty much the same thing here with electronic devices. And our code of conduct says basically kids can't have them on all day during school, but you know, some principals are okay with it in between classes or lunch or you know, other designated times. So once again, we put in principal discretion. Down at the bottom of the page, this was something that was put in at the request of our safety director, Travis, and it just kind of puts in the statute that basically says if you're suspended from school, you can't attend after-school events.
Right.
You're automatically trespassed. You know, and that keeps, that gives principals something in writing when kids say, can I still go to the basketball game even though I'm suspended from school today? You know, just as an example. On the next page, 19, the MTSS process and the behavior threat assessment processes were added into the code of conduct. It's been in practice this whole past school year, but we decided to insert it into the code of conduct because it's referred to and used so much. Plus, it gives parents something to refer to when they hear MTSS or behavior threat assessment. Now that-
Mr. Bowlen.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to commend you all on this. At the- After Mr. McInnis and I sat through the safety meeting with the sergeant that works on the safety commission. And when he shared with us that whole Parkland, the part that was, I guess, not censored, they took out some, but it was, it was there. And, and how the threat assessment, so to speak, we would call it a threat assessment, sat on the assistant principal's desk for months. Where in, you know, and so I appreciate this being here.
It's a part of our culture now. Yes ma'am, it is a part of our culture now and that's why it's, you know, gonna be reflected in every document.
And I was gonna say in my report, I pulled this page as well and I was saying, I just hope and pray that all of us, the minute something like this hit, I would rather err on the side of it just being us being overly protective as opposed to putting it on a desk somewhere and God forbid something like this happened. So this is great and we appreciate it.
Taken very seriously.
We do, we appreciate it.
Don't turn that page yet.
Oh, okay.
The, the middle paragraph and it's kind of, I like the way this page was done and it's kinda done logically. But the MTSS process and the behavior threat assessment process is kind of bookend around the district community intervention services. Just think of that as Randy Hestrom's Brain Child. It's something that Randy is wanting to do. I'll give you just a second to read that paragraph. But it's basically a step before expulsion. We looked at our expulsion numbers and they've been a bit high and we're trying to throttle back on those. And so here in the Palaca area, Randy wants to start with CLO, Palaca High School and Jenkins Middle School and come up with a community group, if you will, an intervention group that consists of school-based personnel, parents, and community members who will come together to try and come up with an additional intervention or two for these students. Now, the principal has to be on board and they can't be put up for expulsion for something like weapons or anything like that. But if it's something, say a kid who just gets in trouble for a lot of small things that lead up to big things and they're in solution center at Palaca High School and they're written up there, so they're put up for expulsion, this could potentially be one more step before we put a kid up for expulsion.
I wanna commend Mr. Bowlen and Mr. Hestrom. They, well, we all met with a group, a community group and got a lot of feedback from them. But I believe y'all actually went over to another county.
Yeah, Elachua.
Saw this in action. So, you know, they spent considerable time discussing this and putting this.
They have a lot of resources and a lot of infrastructure and programs that are already going on in Elachua County that we don't have, so we're trying to piecemeal it together. So the key word to, that kinda jumps off the page in this paragraph is in the second sentence where it says the student may be referred. This is something that's in practice as we speak. Matter of fact, well, it's summertime, but I don't think it'll be in practice at the very beginning of the school year. It's still conceptual in nature right now and Randy's been on TDE a lot this summer. But we're, we have high hopes that we can install this and put it in play in the Palaca area secondary schools this upcoming school year.
Why you're, why you said that is the reason that I spoke to Travis prior to the meeting. This, essentially, we try to get this into the hands of every child at the beginning of school year. And I thought it was statutory. I believe it does help legally if they get the, the discipline plan in their hands. And I believe board policy may say that at some point. I just can't quite remember exactly what it said. But this is always a work in progress.
Yes.
And it's, we may find things during the year that the superintendent has to recommend to the school board to give him. He has the autonomy and the authority to let his principals make those decisions. And then what recommendation that principal makes, the superintendent will confide with that principal and then send it to the board. And, and there are those children that have repeat chronic misconduct or anything that we find. It's like the rule that says, and any other behavior not covered above. I mean, a rule or an action that can be disciplined is what the principal or the superintendent deem necessary to come before the board. And, and there's, you know, there's always, no matter how hard and how far we work with this, there'll always be that loophole. That's why the law gives very broad sweeping powers to the superintendent to, to meet out the, the, the principal having the discretion to use good common judgment on what they do for these kids, so.
And along those lines, David, and we try very hard to support our principals and take into account that, that, you know, they, they're in the trenches and they need, they need us to support them. But that said, we'll also have Randy review every expulsion packet. And we just won't be a rubber stamp by the superintendent. He's gonna give it a very thorough look and then go out to the school and then just sit down with the local administration and make sure everything has been done humanly possible before we bring it to an expulsion committee.
I feel good with the, the firm stances that I've seen on the discipline, I mean, on the expulsion committee that I've served on for this year and by the committee and the heartfelt times that the board, you know, maybe worked out a solution or that group that, other than what was quite recommended. So this, this is why this is very important on discretion. So I just, discipline is an ever-changing thing. You know, we don't know what device may come up next, whether it's vaping in a bathroom or whatever, you know.
Yes.
That kid is gonna create a problem. But I, I think you're on the right track. I really like what you've done here.
Okay, and on page 20, that's just a continuation of the behavior threat assessment process. And then that last paragraph speaks to, upon the direction of the behavioral threat assessment team, principals can request for mental health or substance abuse treatment referral. If, if a kid is doing something very egregious and the team recognizes that, yeah, you probably need to be seeing a counselor about that. They wanted something in writing that would kinda give them the firm ground to stand on to almost say, you know, before we let this kid back into the general population, you really need to sit down with a counselor and, and, you know, and, and at least get the process started. Just, you know, because there are times when, you know, a parent may say or a student may refuse to talk with someone. And so if something is going down and you know as a, as an administrator for the safety of the general population of your school, you need to have a mental health person talk with this individual. We need something in writing to kinda support that.
It's better for our own people. I know that the law used, supports a school superintendent directing that someone be psychologically evaluated if necessary, if they consider it to be a threat. But it's better if you have your own interventional people that can tell you how, how it's going, you know, where everything is.
All right, on page 21, 21 and 22 are identical. They're the discipline matrix. For weapons, if you look at the first little red box up towards the top, safety, a student's safety plan is done anytime a kid is written up for a weapon. That's now reflected. Vaping was added with tobacco, speaking of vaping. And then the district community intervention at Randy's Brain Child, so to speak, is also listed here as an intervention before expulsion. Then on the, like I said, those two pages are identical.
For just a second?
Yes ma'am.
So if I understood correctly, then the, the intervention program or team was just gonna be at CLO, CLO and Jenkins and Palaca High School?
Right.
So is that not a step for?
Well, that's why I said it's still conceptual and it's not in place for even those three schools yet. But if it works and we can expand it, you know, we, the idea here is to start small. And, and there was some debate on whether or not we should even include it in the code of conduct yet. But Randy thought it would be a good idea if we did and I supported him on it just because we have high hopes that we will be able to get this in place.
I'm up.
I mean, I think it's a great idea.
I'm up. So do I, but right now, once again, it's just not in place and, and you know, all the, right now, it's a lot of great ideas, but it takes a lot of people to come to the table and volunteer to give up their time and their resources and, and, and we're very optimistic that that's gonna happen. But currently, we're, it's still in the, we're working out the kinks.
Are you concerned about the kids maybe in the west and the south having the same opportunity?
Right, I'm just concerned if, if they got to the level where they maybe could be expelled, would they, could there be an intervention team?
I'm sure there will.
I would hate to think that.
Yeah, I think that's something we could.
Definitely.
Well, that's, that's the plan.
Randy's essentially.
We want it to be a countywide thing. But you know, if you have Palaca pal and some of the people who are working with, with some of the, the students who may potentially go before this expulsion committee or some of the other activities that they may be engaged with them. And Jarvis Milton was just here a little while ago as a good example of someone who may spend some time to mentor a student or, or, you know. DJ Johnson, who was here, may want to, you know, work with a kid while he's on duty or off duty, you know, to, to do some type of additional sweat program. But right now, it's mostly conceptual in nature, once again. And, and we've, we've still got a lot of the kinks to work out.
We discussed at length the sweat type program at the, in our expulsion hearings this year, trying to find an alternative to put the kids out there and make them sweat and, and work with law enforcement. But it takes money and it takes resources and we've gotta walk, crawl, crawl before we can walk, walk before we can run. Thomas is right. It, that's, I just see it leading to the outlying areas. We'll find a way to make it work.
Okay, and the bottom of page 37, that is a language and it carries over into 38. That is language that basically loosens the zero tolerance language. It comes from 7030. It kinda loosens the 7069 language, so we don't have to throw the bucket, students for anything and everything. Essentially, and a good example of that would be a kid never, has never been in trouble, never gotten a referral and he lives on a farm and he forgets he has a little teeny pocket knife in his pocket. Comes to school and all of a sudden, we have to put him in front of an expulsion committee, resource officer, et cetera, et cetera. And we all know it's silly, but the law says we need to do something. So now we have language in the code of conduct that supports good old common sense. That's good. The bottom of that page is basically when Travis met with, he had his safety meeting with all of his stakeholders. One of the things that the parents wanted was lockdown procedures put in the code of conduct. Basically, what triggers a lockdown are the first two bullets there on, on 38. And then on 39 are the student responsibilities and the parent responsibilities, once they're in lockdown. He intentionally left some of the steps out because you don't wanna tip, tip your hand, so to speak, which is just wise. But the things that they need to know are essentially there. And if they ever wanna know a place where they can refer to, where's that in writing? Or what happens when we go in lockdown? Or what should I do? Or what should my kid do or can't do? It's there in writing.
And Thomas, I, I had that as part of my, my report to, to, the receipt of this booklet, of this code of conduct booklet where the parent signs and the student signs. And it says they've gone over it and their child understands what he or she is held accountable for it should this happen. What, what do we have in place to make sure that 100% of our students bring this thing back? Because God forbid, if an incident occurs, you know, we don't want anybody saying, but we didn't know that, we didn't get that. What are we doing to make sure that these schools get these forms back signed?
Let me come back, let me come back to you with that at the, the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'd like to report or respond to that publicly.
Okay.
But what I can say right now is currently, we don't run them in mass anymore. I know we have discipline meetings at every school. And, and deans go over the code of conduct with the student body.
Well, that was my, that was my question earlier, was the statutory requirement, I don't believe it's, I don't know, but I don't.
It's access to it. It can be online.
And, and that's how, that's how we're doing it.
Even if we hand, even if we, but even if we put it in a warm, in a hand of a student and a parent and they sign for it, it's irrelevant that, I mean, it's relevant that they know the rules, but the superintendent and the board have rules and other responsibilities that irrespective of whether the child or the parent thinks something should be done, the superintendent can make recommendations that are not covered under this hand, this, this booklet by law. He has broad latitude and that would be for Charlie to, and the superintendent to work out.
There's no guarantee if they sign it that they've read it.
And, and I hear all of that and I understand all of that. But when you sat through the, the session and you hear that, that the ball was dropped, you know, wherein this person did not do a code red because nope, in the policy, they're saying you can't do, et cetera. And, and so I just wanna make sure that all of our students hear this and know. But you've said that the deans are doing it? That's fine with me. But we just need to make sure they hear it.
I, I hear you loud and clear. What you said is a little bit, is a little bit concerning, you know, with the liability part of it. And I don't know if Charlie wants to weigh in on that or not, but, but that warrants some additional research. And I'll, I'll look into it and we'll report back to you.
We just, I think Sandy is correct in that we wanna make sure the deans do share everything with the child.
I'm sure that's happening, but I mean, as a matter of, as a matter of covering ourselves.
I remember that. But, and that would be, that would be nice.
Seriousness.
But really.
I'm delighted what's happened that we need to come up with a better way to get that information.
Even if we spend the first two, three days.
We have the capability of doing it and, and we've done, we did it in mass for years. And quite frankly, the reason that, that we stopped was to, and, and we use that money to,
We keep changing.
To tutor kids who were expelled at the time. And Randy took that money and paid for teachers to be able to actually
I get it.
See kids who, to keep them on track for graduation who have been put out of school for whatever reason.
This is extremely beneficial, but they're, they're still, you know, it's like watching a video of, of a student at school or a bus. You know, the parents get real hung up on, well, I didn't see that happening. You don't have the video. It doesn't matter. If a teacher or a dean say, or a bus driver says it happened, then it happened. And that's how we have to interpret that. But I mean, that's, that's where even, even the best laid plans of mice and men oftentimes go awry. This, this, all of this is gonna, if it can happen, it will. There'll be some kinda conflict with any of this. And that's why the discretion that we have is, is as broad for the superintendent as it should be, so.
Well, that's a good concern and a real concern. I think it warrants a public response. So we'll, we'll report back to you at the next meeting. There were a few other things that I didn't include in, in this, but they were like table of contents and just supplemental materials, resources, that type thing.
Yes.
The changes in the language that I've hit.
Thank you.
You did a thorough job helping us.
But my question on the statutory, if you'll get back with us to make sure we, make sure we can figure out how we want to comply with what Ms. Gilliard said. I think that'd be neat. Make sure the deans do read it and share it with the kids.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept item F1 in the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept F1 as in the consent agenda and second by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there are no opposers. Motion carries five zero. Okay? At this time, we are now in emergency session and we do have three items, no, four, four items. Okay, first item, after the fact approval of teachers assisting students in meeting goals for on-time graduation, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve this item one of the emergency items.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Buckles, second by Mrs. Crawford. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? None. Motion carries five zero. After the fact approval to pay bus drivers, Crescent City High School, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, after the fact approval to pay bus drivers at Crescent City High School.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Holly Pickens, second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. Nefec, after the fact approval to pay independent contractors to provide biannual model policy updates for the agency, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I make a motion that we accept emergency item number three, as stated.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Crawford, and second by Mr. McInnis, that we accept item number three under the emergency items. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. Final additional workouts for individuals at Browning Pierce Elementary School, Jenkins Middle School, and Price Middle School, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve emergency item number four that you just read.
I'll second it.
All right. Okay, it's been moved, most, moved by Mr. Buckles that we accept emergency item number four, and second by Mr. Bud McInnis. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposing? None. Motion carries five zero. We are now out of emergency session. We have no unfinished business. We do have new business, and Mr. Attorney, if you will do, so that we, roll call, so that we can determine if we're going to advertise or not.
All right.
All right, I will read them. Policy number 5112, entrance requirement.
District one.
Advertise.
District two.
Advertise.
District three.
Advertise.
District four.
Advertise.
District five.
Advertise. Okay, policy number 5500, student conduct.
District one.
Advertise.
District two.
Advertise.
District three.
Advertise.
District four.
Advertise.
District five.
Advertise. Okay, policy number 8330, student records.
District one.
Advertise.
District two.
Advertise.
District three.
Advertise.
District four.
Advertise.
District five.
Advertise. Policy number 8405, school safety and security.
District one.
Advertise.
District two.
Advertise.
District three.
Advertise.
District four.
Advertise.
District five.
Advertise. Policy number 8407, safe school officers.
District one.
Advertise.
District two.
Advertise.
District three.
Advertise.
District four.
Advertise.
District five.
Advertise. Policy number 8420, emergency management, emergency preparedness, and emergency response agencies.
District one.
Advertise.
District two.
Advertise.
District three.
Advertise.
District four.
Advertise.
District five.
Advertise. Okay. In the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. Our agenda now calls for reports from the board members, board attorney, and superintendent. We'll start with Mrs. Jane Crawford.
I hated not being able to go to FSBA. It sounds like y'all learned a lot. And, you know, at some point, I look forward to hearing all about that. I was just thinking today about the work that goes on in our schools during the summer. And I hope everyone in the community is aware of what does take place over the summer. There's so much going on, from the training of teachers, hiring teachers and personnel that are needed, constructing master schedules, filling student schedules with the right amount of periods that they have to have, completing, you know, all of the curriculum and what's going to be taught, getting the buildings thoroughly cleaned and ready for the new school year, enrolling new students, that happens all summer long and into the first couple of months of school. And it's just a lot that goes on to ensure that our schools run smoothly throughout the year. And I think some people think they're just on vacation all summer long, and they're not. That's when a lot of our great work is done to help our students succeed. And I just want everyone to be aware of that. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. McInnis?
Okay, I echo that, Ms. Crawford. It's awesome what they're doing right now. And I want to thank the Information Service Department here. The district has taken for granted all that they've done, like what they just did with the product of Putnam, social media, all the graduations, the rewards, the terrific kids, and they're on the spot all the time. And it's just, it's quality production, and they can't compare it to anybody else, I don't think, in any other school district. I am, I'm still like feeling that training with Marjorie Stoneman Douglas that we, Ms. Gilliard and I attended, and Ms. Pickens also attended. I wish, I had wished that the whole group had had that whole training as a whole, because it was, yeah, it was something you'll never forget. And some things, I just made notes about Sergeant Sees, he's been hired now in Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. He's hired as a full-time officer to find out the recommendations and the system failures, and there were many. But one of the main things that gleaned to me, well, he pointed out, you need to identify the threat, communicate the threat to others, and react to the threat. And I just kind of refer back to our emergency operating plan that we had on page 71. There is a detailed calendar of when we have active assailant lockdowns. And these have to be taken, they have to be understood, and they have to be taken seriously. Because when you hear it from that sergeant's mouth, I mean, it was a chronological order of the goings-on and how so many people failed. And if they had done this, even from the beginning of the Uber driver that didn't notice that the guy was carrying a gun case and had Cabela on it, and he was going at the back of the school. There was just too many to write down, and, I don't know, it just kind of broke my heart.
Madam Chair, can I echo that? And you had talked to me down in Tampa about possibly inviting him to come talk to our administrators. Essentially, I went to that training, and I've been to some of those trainings also. But if you could see Mr. Bowing and Mr. Weaver after the meeting, just, you know, maybe express to them what you'd like to see, then I'm sure they could look into inviting him.
Yes, sir. And not just our administrators, I'm talking about our teachers, like we have in the past when we would have that first day of pre-planning where you would bring in this keynote speaker, like we've done it in the past, and share. Because there's, there were quite a few things that did help, wherein the situation could have been worse, if you can think any worse than 17, losing their lives. There could have been many more. But it, one of the things that tugged at my heart, the teacher had the corner, the hardening corner in her room. But when everybody got in there with everything else she had, her microwave, her everything else that was there, one girl was on the line and in the view of the shooter. He did not go in any rooms, but if he saw people in there, he shot. And the child lost her life. Because, not because kids were being mean, pushing out, but everybody was trying to get it, just little things that we want them to take seriously, making that cover for that classroom.
It might be something, I mean, we have some training already set up, I think, but it might be something we could incorporate.
So most definitely, we'll, the three of us can get with you, because it matters.
One thing that they did want to point out, they said that all, all school personnel are first responders, and that's the mindset you have to have.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
Oh, just to echo a little bit on mentioning, Thomas mentioned expulsion rates earlier. I've never been one to feel like that having a few more expulsions in another county makes you worse. I think it sends a message that you tolerate less foolishness of those that the principal, the superintendent recommend, and then it comes before the committee, and if the committee recommends it, then it's pretty bad. I do like what I'm seeing with some of the principals, and I'm going to bleed into the Parkland thing in a minute, but some of the principals are starting to utilize Florida statute verbiage to scare straight some of the kids in recommending, instead of this one year, under Florida law, they have, can recommend two calendar years of expulsion. And they recommend it and send it to the committee, and the committee is able to work back through that. And it's, sometimes, some of the things that we're talking about, like the Parkland video, is better to do it low-key than to make a big deal out of it, because you're going to get, you're still going to have the disenfranchised children that we're trying to utilize our mental health services to identify, to make sure we keep an eye on them, so that kind of stuff doesn't happen. And anyway, you've been a principal, we've looked for children that have been murdered by other children, we've been through it. The Parkland, I love how the principals have done that this year, and some of the kids and their parents have been so thankful that the child, we found other alternatives, like Randy, like Thomas is mentioning, to work out, you know, a sweat-type situation or other situation. And the superintendent has been very gracious to allow the committee to do that. And I just, I just think we're on the right track with that. And with this situation with Parkland, there's no right or wrong answer, but I think the safety committee and the superintendent and staff have really got us, got us in a good situation here. And will it ever be perfect? No, but it is, like you say, our people, I guarantee you, the ones that are not responsible for classroom kids will run the gunfire. They're just going to do it. That's, all the administrators I know, that's what they're going to do, and that's kind of how it works. So I'm, I'm feeling good about the preparedness, and, you know, it's just, there's a lot of unspoken, unheard-of things that the law covers that we do and we take for granted that can't all be put on paper, you know? And inadvertently, with all the volumes of laws and legal rules, our administrators and teachers will sometimes violate a law, and it doesn't mean they're bad or that they meant wrong, they just didn't know. I mean, it's just, you just got to keep working and keep going through it. And I appreciate that Thomas and Randy and Travis have got us to this point, and it's going to continue to evolve. So, Mr. Superintendent, thank you, and thank you, staff, too.
Thank you. Mrs. Pickens?
Okay, we, I did, it was a great learning experience at the FSBA conference last week, and the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas breakout session was extremely eye-opening. You can hear it from people, but when you actually see things, and the sergeant was so good, he was so thorough. The thing that caught me, besides the Uber driver, which I guess I had missed before, was just the simplicity of locking a gate. Had that gate been locked, he couldn't have gotten in. It's just that little thing. And I think we've done a fantastic job trying to secure our schools that way and prevent it like step one, you know? I'd also like to congratulate all the products of Putnam. I'm proud to say I was the teacher of two of them, Dr. Harris and DJ Johnson. And they were both great students, and I'm very thankful that Dr. Harris is back, because he's my doctor. And I would also like to thank the district for being so progressive, because when you go to the FSBA and you hear problems in other districts, I think to myself, in fact, I looked over at Bud and Ms. Gilliard, I said, you know, in my head, I'm thinking, we're already doing that, and we've already looked at that. And so it makes you feel good. So thank you for putting us in that position to be proud of being in Putnam County. And I did get to go by Middleton, Bernie, and Miller, and everybody was working and getting ready. Mr. Adams is very excited about an idea that he has, and I think it's a great idea, and I hope they can get everything worked out. It was nice to see repairs going on at Miller, fixing a sidewalk cover that has been a problem for a while, and some floors in some classrooms, that was really good. And I don't know if now's the correct time to say this, but I would like to remind us that we are teachers over 20, you know, we were going to do it at the beginning of the year, and that's going to be coming up. So I think that perhaps we.
And we want it on the agenda if, for, not our July meeting, well, maybe we need to, for our July meeting to now kind of put some teeth into it. So thank you for bringing that up.
And that's all I have.
Okay, just, again, summer conference, just phenomenal. With the school safety, another thing, you reminded me of what he said about the, not just the simple thing of the gate, but even their walkie-talkies, they couldn't communicate with each other on the walkie-talkies, the sheriff's department, et cetera. So just little things that, again, we kind of were not arrogant, but we had our chest stuck out, because Putnam County is definitely ahead of the game. And I can remember when we sat in this room, and we, all of us, you know, we were torn about this Guardian program. What do we do? You know, we, we didn't want to do it, we wanted something else, but financially, we couldn't afford it. But our sheriff department and our school district came together with community people, with Mr. Weaver, and we put something in place that evidently it has worked, because we have not experienced a tragedy or anything. And so I give thanks to God for that and for the leadership that we have here. One of the things I did attend was the 2020 census, that is coming up. And definitely, we need to make sure that we help our parents in getting these things filled out, because funding is connected. Seats in the House of Representatives, from what Lubbe, Lubbe Navarro shared with us. And so we want to make sure that is done. And one other thing, Thomas, in yours, in your report with the code of conduct, I put an asterisk by it, evidence-based interventions. Because God forbid, if we have to do something that parents may not like, we will be able to show that this is what we did. And so that, that's mine. Mr. Attorney?
All right. So I have here some information on the share tables that we discussed prior to our meeting. And we've compiled the articles and information from the different sources that we have. So please take a look.
Thank you.
Give one to the superintendent, so it's just the wish of the district to do share tables. This is a little bit more information on how to do it. Also attended the Florida School Board Attorney Association meeting Friday and Saturday of last week. And as our main speaker, we had Joy Frank. I'm sure all of you remember her from the different presentations and conferences. Unfortunately, she's going to be retiring, so we're going to lose that wealth of information. But the entire conference was centered around school safety, 70-30. And I have to echo what board member Pickens and Gilliard have said about Putnam County being ahead of the curve, because there are districts who are behind in the rollout and the implementation and everything that I've seen with superintendent and Travis Weaver, we are ahead of the curve. And also with the rollout of the Guardian program, there are some districts who, for the first time, are considering and implementing the Guardian program. And there have been epic fights between the districts and the sheriff's offices. And it just makes you appreciate, I guess, the ability of multiple governmental agencies to cooperate in Putnam County for the benefit of students. And some of the stories you hear, you just, you cannot believe them. So. So with school safety being the main point of conversation, there are a lot of things that are going on statewide, local. The governor has taken it very seriously, of course, with the convening of the grand jury. It's an 18-member panel that convened down in the 17th Circuit. And their next meeting is July 15th. No one really knows kind of what the focus is gonna be. We did have a guest speaker who is a prosecutor, who is advising the grand jury, speak to the group of attorneys on Friday and Saturday. And, well, you know, everybody's just waiting to see how that develops, where the subpoenas go, what will be done. But it seems, you know, there are four distinct questions that the grand jury is asking. One of those, of course, is the paying of the school safety monies and where those have gone. And some are related to bond construction projects with other districts in the state. But as I've said, Travis Weaver, the superintendent, this district is taking 70-30 and all the other those related to school safety very seriously. And we're on top of it, so.
What were the other couple that you can, can you remember?
I'll get it for you, all the ones that are-
Because, I mean, that's kind of odd that he would be convening, the governor's convening the grand jury? Or has he been petitioned to do it by someone, or?
Yeah, there was a Supreme Court order allowing him to do that.
Yeah.
And there are distinct areas that they were looking into. I can see that information.
It sounds, sounds pretty good.
You didn't do that in fifth grade. Your penmanship was much better than that.
Ms. Gilliard is commenting on my signature. I need to, I need to improve on that, particularly.
Thank you for that information, Charlie.
And just to tag on with Charlie, I just want to commend Mr. Bowling's directors, specifically Travis and Randy, they really work very closely together. And Travis did a great job last week going over, with all of our administrators, our emergency operations plan. And, you know, I'm telling you, those guys are, they're prepared, guys and gals. And had a chance to ask questions and all. So I think we're on top of it, and thanks to their leadership, our kids are in good hands. I'd like to read this little email I got from Justin Campbell, our 21st Century Coordinator. He says, "Federal Programs is pleased to announce that we have submitted our notice of intent to submit an application for the 2019-2020 21st Century Community Learning Centers." As 21st Century Community, CCLC grant. "We are looking to expand the 21st CCLC to the following schools: Melrose Elementary, Middleton Bernie Elementary, Aquila Elementary, James A. Long Elementary, C.H. Price Middle School, C.L. Overture Sixth Grade Center, and E.H. Miller School." So we're submitting that grant. And if you have any questions, our federal programs director, Melissa Coleman's back here. If you have any questions, Randy, put about that. Some additional things I want to mention. You probably saw last week, very proud of our Mosley Elementary School. As you know, Mosley, Mosley staff and students, the voices of Mosley, went to the Learning Sciences International Conference and presented in Orlando. And that was unprecedented for a group of students to go down there, elementary students, and actually present. And myself, Nora Laura, were able to go. We had other commitments. But we're just so proud of them and the leadership of Sarah Jean McDaniel and her staff. So anything you want to add to that, Laura? Anything?
They, the pictures of the kids are on all of their, our, our children are the front that left all of their brochures and materials currently for this year. So it's pretty impressive. I don't think the kids know how impressive it is that they spoke at a national conference.
Yep. Very proud.
And just think, some of them may not have ever been outside of Putnam County.
Right.
And to get that experience and that exposure, we're doing it. We're doing it here in Putnam County. And I think a lot of people are gonna start noticing what we're doing. Small, but working in a mighty big way.
Well, congratulations to Laura and her staff, especially Jonathan Hinky and Dr. Coleman and all the people that had a lot to do with putting that together. I mean, LSI, that's been a very valuable partnership for us over the last two years. We're gonna continue with them regardless of what happens, because there are some things going on at Mosley that we are replicating in other schools. So you're gonna see some great things happen. Bear with me just a second. I also want to brag about our jobs for Florida graduates. Okay, and I mentioned that before. That is the Florida branch of the larger version of Jobs for American Graduates, national organization. We've been invited to receive an award at the national conference next month, July 11th, to be exact. And gonna have some of the students there, the JFG teachers. But we are being recognized nationally for the work that we are doing in Putnam County for our JFG program. Thanks to Dr. Coleman for writing those grants. As you know, we've got the grants this year for the first time in our middle schools.
Where's that gonna be?
It's gonna be in Orlando. And we'll take some pictures and bring it back and all that.
Oh, you just counted us out, just all of them?
Well, come on down.
I told you that we're gonna start getting some national recognition. I mean, if you remember, it hadn't been long ago. But I've been, I've seen it happen, and I've seen where we're going, and I'm very-
So you've been prophesying.
I've been, I'm not, I can't be a prophet in my own land. You told me that.
I want to point out while we're on the graduation rates, if you look over by Ms. Pickens, Felicia was able to get that put together and made. And I think it's the first time we posted it, right? Or am I behind times? The first time. So it has our graduation rates as a district and by our high schools. That's this, this past year's version. But I'm telling you what's very, a very important part of that is our JFG programs. I mean, those are 50 kids in each school. And just think what 50 kids can do to a graduation rate.
You know, yeah.
But not only that, it's not that they're just graduating, they're graduating and going on to school, getting a job. Those, those JFG treasure hunters are staying with them and helping them post-high school. So they're knocking out of the park. And people around the nation are recognizing that. So just had to brag about that a little bit. Also, nationally, we are, myself and a group of school-based personnel and district personnel are flying out Monday morning to Denver, Denver, Colorado. And we're going to cybersecurity training sponsored by the Department of Homeland Security. And Dr. Coleman has a lot of information about that. But basically, we are being trained so we can start training students in our high schools. That's the up-and-coming profession. As you know, there's so much of that going on. We're gonna have jobs created for our kids that don't even exist yet. And we're gonna be in good shape here in Putnam County, because we're on the cutting edge as far as getting that training. I don't know, do you know of many other schools in Florida that are doing that?
There's, there's been a movement as of late to try to get districts to incorporate more K-12 training in the area of cybersecurity as the Department of Homeland Security has come on board and our military has recognized that that needs to be a new division. And really, the conversations about technology. If you think about it, your cars mute themselves now. Safety, safety, you know, you break themself and all. And really, what that means to kids is what we need to, need to incorporate into our schools for their safety and for their knowledge, and so that they can be prepared.
We'll bring you back a report from at our next meeting.
Rick, I wanted to, I forgot to do it under my time, but I wanted to commend you and your leadership on our endorsement and all the grief we went through with Lift Putnam and the, the, really, the grief we had to go through with the Office of the Inspector General and some complaints that were filed over people who didn't really understand. If you look, they've had their tax, their IRS deductions reinstated within a few-week period after being bombarded on Facebook negatively so hard. And now they've been recognized as one of the better foundations. But that ties into your graduation initiative and the board's graduation initiative on school readiness. I mean, what you're doing, what we're doing with Lift Putnam is gonna make a difference on high school graduation rates for a decade, you know, long after we're off of this board and you're no longer superintendent. And I think it's very important that, I think it's interesting that on some of the negative websites how you haven't heard a peep out of them about some of the good stuff going on. So I just wanted to tell you that it is systemic in what we've done and what you're doing, and it's making such a difference in the lives of our kids.
Well, thank you. It's all about you guys and our staff and our students and our teachers, and we're all working together, swimming in the same direction. But I do want to point out, Lift Putnam was recognized, Mr. Pageant actually was recognized by the state in the paper, I think today.
Yeah, part of state recognition.
So, yeah, not only the district, but Lift Putnam is being recognized for the-
And that's, that was my, the point of it. You don't hear, you don't hear anybody saying what a shady group that is and how bad we are for trying to help the most deserving children that don't have the help. You know, it's just, they want to find something to complain about.
Well, all anybody needs to do is walk into a pre-K classroom and see what's going on.
Understand.
And enough said about that.
But thank you for standing strong with that.
Thank you. One last thing, just want to point out that our FFA was actually recognized. And you can, you know, elaborate on that, but we had several of our students recognized, again, in Orlando. Orlando's been busy here in the last-
Hey, with Putnam County.
Recognized, was that the state convention?
Yes.
And we had several of our students recognized, and it's on our Facebook page. But, you know, great leaders. This is the greatest leadership organization, as far as I'm concerned. And we've got some students that are really excelling in that. So thanks to Renee and her leadership with all our CTE programs. And along with that, and I'll finish up with this, I've been talking too long. Today, I actually, I ran down to Orlando again today, today and had a luncheon. That's why we're meeting tonight, by the way, with GP, Representative from GP, Robert Knutson, who actually helps with our robotics clubs. And we actually had a luncheon, all the districts down there around the state of Florida had lunch with their, you know, one of their business partners. And we asked GP to be our representative. And there were seven districts that were highlighted, but we had like 44 districts down there, the superintendents and their business partners. But want to thank them personally for helping us, especially with our advanced manufacturing. We gave them, we did some pictures with the commissioner. And I asked him to come back to our middle of the, middle of the month meeting in July to come back and we'll recognize him again. But, you know, they've, they've done a lot to help us financially and, you know, with their human support and that type thing. Last thing is, just on your calendars, we have talked to Ms. Crawford. We are gonna schedule a dedication ceremony for Mosley. As you know, the William Thomas Center.
I saw that. It looks really good.
Yeah, have it signed up. So we're gonna schedule, we're looking at two possible dates, August-
27th or 29th.
27th or 29th. If you'll check your calendars, we'll, we'll send you some information. And we'll be inviting some other people to that. But definitely, we'd like to have you all be there. It's gonna be a great day for-
Morning, evening, have you decided?
We hadn't.
We hadn't decided.
It didn't matter to me.
And the U-Banks thing, likewise, you're gonna schedule one?
Yeah, we're gonna schedule something with the U-Banks.
That's wonderful.
We also have that sign finished, I believe, right? So, yeah, we definitely want to, you know, make sure everybody can be there and make that a very distinguished ceremony.
Fantastic.
Yeah. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else to come before the board.